BJ Miller.
God's word reads this way from the book of Nahum, chapter one, verse seven, "The Lord is good, a stronghold in the day of trouble. He knows those who take refuge in him." Let's pray. Father God, we are so grateful for your love for us. We're grateful that you know us, not just casually, but that you know every fiber of our being. And even though you know us and our, every corner of our lives, you love us and you have staked everything on us, sacrificed everything for us, and you provide a stronghold for us if we will only trust in you. I pray that as leaders of our families and of our businesses, our community, our churches, that you would help us to trust in you and that you would give us all that we need, the wisdom and the strength and the boldness to do exactly what you're showing us to do. Bless this commission, Father. Guide its business today and we'll be grateful for all that you do through them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Now a report from our county mayor, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You all have a resolution in front of you that it's another grant opportunity. This is a $945,000 grant, a community development block grant, and it's for expansion of childcare facilities. So respectfully ask that that be put on the agenda for next week. And if you have any questions, the development district people will be here to answer them next week.
Commissioner Slater will put it on there.
That's all I have unless someone has something for me, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions of Mayor Davis?
Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from committees and our districts will start to my right. Start with you, Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Everything's doing good in the first district, but I do have two constituents that called me and I'd like to ask Commissioner Tim Mason to add these to our next road committee. We have an issue out in the Camelot subdivision, basically where that was paved and a couple of years back and basically, and the curb's deteriorating and it's causing water to run into some of the people's properties and wash out things. And so I'd like to put that on there. That would be the Camelot subdivision curb, curbs throughout that subdivision. And also at the end of Frontage Road, I had a constituent call. Actually, he kind of works out there at the end of that road. He is in my first district and he had called me and basically about water puddling up at the, at the end of Frontage Road, leading onto a state highway. So we'd like to put that on there also on that road committee meeting. And that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Did you get that, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, it must be a week of complaints on roadways because I've got one myself. It's 239 Fennel Road. There's an issue there. I don't know that we can really help them, but I'll speak with them about it at the road committee. The other is a situation on Freewill Road, and I'll get the address on that exactly where the issue is. The person that was giving me the complaint didn't have that address at the time, but I told him to bring it up. And also, if we could recognize Mr. Roark, he was going to explain this data report for us. If we can take time, I believe he's in a hurry today, so.
Sure. Come on up, Mr. Roark.
Good evening, everyone. I spoke with Sandra this morning. She's having auditors today. So we discussed the monitoring for last week a little bit. Had a good week. As you see on, I got, all I put on today's report was just the odor and the ammonia. We've not been having any hydrogen sulfide or VOC problems this past week. So you got any question on those, but you still see about the middle of the day, the ammonia still peaks up and of course, the odor's always going to peak up when the ammonia's a little bit high. So overall, I haven't had any complaints. I don't know if any District One Commissioners had any complaints, but overall, last week's been a good week, I think. The other thing I want to say, I visited with the landfill manager last Thursday. He took me and showed me the gas system. Then we went up to the work site and I want to tell you all this before you have the, well, landfill committee meeting. I don't know when that'll be, but it'll probably be before voting time. Anyway, he, he took me up and showed me the gas system because I was in question whether this gas system at a particular time of day was burping or what was happening. And he said he didn't know how it could be happening, you know, at the same time, basically every day. So really didn't find out yet what the cause of this is, but it, it's not a big nuisance, but sometimes I'm having some people call and say, well, gas is up in my home or up in my trailer. But it's not very often. But we still, this is something we've got to work on. Try to find out where this is happening. The landfill itself was really, really good shape. I mean, we, we didn't, there wasn't any odor. Of course, we ain't had no sludge since March the first. Another thing that's not happening now is they're not taking in any of those liquid waste from Clear Harbor and Marion Environmental in Chattanooga. They're not taking any of that. It's going to Birchwood in Alabama. So I don't know if they lost contract on that or what. I think they used to bring that in. So that's something we need to think about. And they don't take, one landfill won't take both companies either. You know, that's something we've got to question, you know, in if we let them do this liquid waste or if we come up with agreement, get rid of the sludge to take the waste. And I think we got to make sure that we do a, change a contract or do a agreement that if we take this liquid waste, it may have some things in it that creates a bad odor. So it's just like mixing it up and taking it up landfill. It's just like bringing in sludge from Georgia. So I don't know if it'll smell that bad or not because we don't know exactly what's going to be in it. But there is a lot of liquids that, I mean, like pig waste, cow waste. There's some though that's pretty odor. So that's something I think we need to consider whenever we try to get this agreement with them, what we're going to do. I, I just hope we keep the sludge. I mean, it done proven the sludge, it just made the whole community a different place. So if we can work on that, that'd be the best thing. I know it's in the contract and they probably don't even give it up. Because I think talking to the manager, if they don't get the liquid waste, then they're going to send their team out to try to get some more sludge. I think that's just a threat. So anyway, we'll have to see about that. I, I think that pretty well covers that. I don't know how regularly, you know, Sandra will do these reports. I don't know if we need to do them everywhere. But I guess there's a problem we might need to. But anyway, we're, I did find out we had a little issue on the south side of the landfill. When the wind blows out of the south, we was getting some ammonia and come to find out after doing a little research, they had put some mushroom compost on a garden nearby our monitor. So that's the kind of things we've got to, you know, we've got to investigate these things when we find out the wind not in favor of the landfill making things. That's, that's one thing I found out this week.
Any questions? Commissioner Raper and I'll come, Commissioner Hughes.
If I'm reading this correctly, it looks like April 6th to the 7th, we had a large spike there. Is that of concern to you, what you know about?
The odor is a concern. Two, that's over a two in odor. That's a very, yes. We didn't get a complaint on it, but we got a spike that day of something that was pretty potent.
And, and even though we may not have a complaint, I mean, to me, that's what our equipment is supposed to be doing and it's showing something there. So I, I, no more than I know about the equipment, I, I was just asking you, do you, are you concerned about that one really large spike there?
I, I am really concerned about any of these spikes because those people live in there. And TDEC or TDEC air pollution does not regulate these odors at all. I mean, they don't have any concern about them. I talked to a media variety, I believe it was, and we discussed some of these things. And of course, they're going to get a little monitoring system of some sort and they're going to use it in Athens pretty soon, but.
True.
But, but still, you know, I think any, any of these spikes is a concern to the health and well-being of the community because if you get that all the time, then I think it's a health hazard.
And I, I just want to make one comment. We, we've, we've said this before in landfill committee and we've said it in commission meetings, but we're not in the odor detecting business. We're in the gas detecting business. So with this new equipment. So, you know, I, I just want to make sure that the public understands that and is aware of that. So anyway, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Raper. Commissioner Hughes?
Commissioner Raper, thank you, thank you for clearing that up about the gases. I, I agree with you. I think people don't realize that what we're actually looking at is the, the gases off from it. The odor is basically generated, if you see the, the measurement, is from putting those gases together. And this is what they are saying the odor would be at. Ms. Roark, if I may ask, on a lot, you were saying that at certain times, the wind was coming from the south to the north?
Yeah.
At those times, is that showing where all these spikes are at? Was that the situation?
No, I'd have to go back. I'd have to go back to the weather monitor and get the time. I'd have to do quite a bit of research to go back and, and relate that to the time and, and the spike.
Okay.
There is, there is a chart on there and go back to and pull up that exact time and tell how high it was.
For me, I actually know that myself because I went through the training with, with the road department. But I didn't want everybody here that was up here not to understand that, or to think that all these spikes was coming from the, the south, the wind from the south blowing towards it to the, so that they understood that some of these spikes were actually coming from the landfill itself or the direction of the wind blowing off the landfill.
Right.
But thank you.
Yes, sir. But the reason I say odor and everybody else says odor's dealing with these, I know it's gas, but on our monitors itself, it says odor. That's why I say it, Sandra says it. But anyway, it is gas. And one other thing while I got permission to be here just for a second, I'd like to still run this by the commission and I think the chairman, I, I ran by him, would y'all consider letting the public speak right after the approvals, approval of the minutes of the last week's meeting? Most all counties do it. Myself, I think it'd be a good thing. I think a lot of citizens could express their views and opinions. And I think in some cases, y'all could make a decision while you're here and they wouldn't have to come back the next week. I don't know if that's a good reason, but would, would this be a possibility? You know, just, I'm just asking all of you. So, you know, you think about it. You don't have to answer it now. Talk to each other. Most all other counties do it. I think it'd be a good thing myself. You know, I think it'd save a lot of citizens coming back the next week trying to get answers.
I understand what you're saying. Commissioner Epperson had one more question here, I believe.
The, when I met with the landfill manager, I gave him a whole set of reports. Now, I don't, I think Sandra's giving somebody a report every time, but I do discuss this report with the landfill manager. When I have a problem, I text him or call or talk to him. I do, but I'm not sending him these. You know, I left him a packet Thursday when I talked to him. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we didn't know at first whether, how much we wanted to share with the landfill. So, you know, I was skeptical of sharing information, but I guess they can't correct it if we don't tell them what's going on.
Good point.
But I'm, I'm very willing and I told the manager I was very willing to work with him and he is very receptive. He said his goal was to make it better. But I still, I still got. Yeah.
Yeah.
I miss, appreciate their receptible of me going up there. You know, they let me come up. In the past, you knew I couldn't get in that. And the reason was they didn't want you back there smelling the sludge. I was just there 24 hours a day.
Anybody got any other questions, Mr. Roark? Thank you, Mr. Roark. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Commissioner Offler?
Doing well. The, one other thing, the audit committee met today, went through all the three findings, the officer, the mayor and the clerk and other findings. And according to Mr. Reader, everything looked good. Have any major comments from any of the auditors or the committee, rather? And we did come up, I had to ask Ms. Freiberg to craft a new resolution, policy that would address other findings, anything in the future, which I think we'll have a lot of problems like that in the future if we don't address it. So what we've got is a resolution coming for the commission to vote on next week, reference the policy, put in our policy book. Ms. Lori, we'd have a copy of all that on your email the day after the meeting.
Okay.
I have it.
Anything else, Commissioner Offler?
That's, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Peak?
Can I respond to that? So we don't have it at this work session, so let's not vote on it next week. Let's make sure we get it to a work session so we can all look at it and have ample time to vote on it. That way we're prepared. I don't, this is one of those things that, like, and I don't mean to, let me just say this. I am not upset about offense and I am not upset at Mr. Louis Offler for his fence, but I do want these things to start going before committees or a work session before we vote on them, not just through in our emails for the week. The reason we have committees and work sessions are so that the constituents know what going, what's going on and we are transparent because we up here do not talk to each other during the week, even though I just heard somebody say y'all talk to each other. No, we don't. So when it comes to items that we are going to vote on, we don't discuss them with each other. So if we get it in our email and it's just us looking at it, we don't have time to get up here in the public and confer about it. And I don't want to do it during a voting session. I'd rather do it in a work session so that we are transparent and we don't get accused of anything. So I really want us to start using our committees or if we don't want to use the committees, let's do away with these committees and let's just bring everything to a work session and then a voting session, not just mention it here, get it in an email this week and vote on it next week. That's just my take on it, but I won't be voting on it next week until it goes to a full work session and I have it in front of me to look at. There's nothing that urgent that we have that needs to be done that way, in my opinion. You can't have a double standard. I think a week or two ago, people were wanting Dennis to pull his landfill vote off of there because it hadn't got a recommendation from committee. So it's either we have recommendations from the committee or we don't have recommendations for the committee. But either way, I think it needs to come to a work session and we need to discuss what we're going to vote on in detail, not just.
Commissioner Peak, I will note it, it is a recommendation from the audit committee that they had today, so.
I understand, but we need to bring the recommendation to a work session so that we all know what we're talking about. You guys that were here may know what we were talking about during your committee, but that's when a committee needs to bring it to a work session and let's discuss it. I want to know more about it, not just a week in my email. That's all. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Now I'm going to, Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I guess I'll ask one quick question. Does that include resolutions that were brought to the work session that didn't go through a committee? I just, I mean.
I'd like to see everything in a work session.
But we are in a work session right now.
I don't, my point is the resolution that he's bringing, we don't have in front of us. It's going to be emailed to us, but if we're going to vote on it next week, I want to see it now so that we can all discuss it and the details be drawn out. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Aller.
Okay, I will note this. Ms. Multry is printing those off right now to have, to make sure everybody has a copy of that before you leave today. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. A couple of things if you don't mind. Where am I at? Lost my notes here. Oh, first thing, we were asked about the, the increasing of our bid amount from 10,000 to 25,000. Representative Howell presented his bill, House Bill 2909, before the local government committee. It passed the committee and it is scheduled to go to the House floor on April 14th, which I guess will be tomorrow, or, or Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, sorry. So that will take care of it on the House side. The Senate has different rules on private acts. I don't know if it goes through a committee. I think it just may go straight to the Senate floor or something like that. It's in a process though. So if you want to look at the bill, I'll have Lori have a copy of the bill. It is, it does increase it just not, not just for us here. It also affects roads and the school system. When I read paragraph two in there on the House bill, so there's an update on that, Ms. Chairman. Next, the Caring Place is in the process of submitting an application to the Department of Urban Housing. I think I got that right. And has asked for a letter in support of that effort. Just to make clear that this has nothing to do with the money that we appropriated to them. That's going to rent assistance. This is, I believe, for a new facility that they're looking at and they're going through Congressman Fleishman's office with that application process. So I know we're, what Commissioner Peak just said, but I just found out about this. We will have, it's just a letter that we're supporting. It's not going to cost us anything. We're just basically going to say, we support the Caring Places application, Congressman Fleishman, please do what you can, da, 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 da. I don't think it bakes big time on that. We've done it before when we want to support something at Nashville or in Washington. So I'll, I'll get with Lori sometime this week, probably tomorrow, and get that letter drafted and resolution have it so we can vote on next week. That's okay with this commission in support of that. I think the, the price tag on that is 1.6 million or something like that. The next thing I think is on the agenda, so I'll just wait until you recognize me.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Commissioner Peak?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Another road, McClanahan Road, I think it's down 64 Highway. If you'll put that on the road committee meeting. A gentleman on that road says that the road measures seven feet wide, not enough room to put two vehicles beside of. He would like it looked at widening if there's a possibility of putting tile on the sides to widen that road. Apparently, they have a few fender benders there more than often. I'm not sure, but I would like them to take a look at that road. And while we have the resolution in front of us, I would just like to ask a few questions. What, did we have a code of ethics ever at any time or did we amend a code of ethics for audit?
Who wants to answer that? Mr. Offler? I think it was your meeting.
Or the committee.
Yeah, he was, he's the chair of that committee, so that is code of ethics. Yeah, we do have a code of ethics, correct. This is something placed in that as an addition to that.
So we took this out of our own code of ethics and we're just adding it to your committee?
We're going to have a lot of problems at the future. Builders. Problem. Allure. Allure. Of the problem.
I'm very troubled.
Our, our votes are often very important and you don't realize sometimes, some people vote on something that they might get caught up in it a year down the road. So I think it's very wise that we change that policy or alter that policy to fit things in the future and in the present.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Peak.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you. I was going to ask a question. I know Commissioner Louis Offler mentioned builders, but wouldn't this apply to any, any occupation? Educators? I mean, we've got a lot of educators sitting here. We, you know, I was just curious if this applies to any.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we're putting it in there because it, it could, depending on what we're voting on, could impact and future people coming on the commission that might, you know.
And too, we do orientation too at the beginning of each commission, which I did. And, and that was one of the things that was covered there with C-TAC. But I just wanted to make sure, I mean, because I keep hearing builder. So I just want to make sure that this applies to everybody.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Commissioner Peak and then Commissioner Offler.
So, Mr. Offler, so now, even though we do say we have a conflict of interest, now we're going to just make sure that if we have an indirect interest that we abstain? Is that what we're doing or just?
Read that.
Okay.
The way I read.
Okay.
Say that you have, see a possible conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't refer just builders, vendors. I'm talking about everybody, Mr. Epperson.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I'm just, I can see where builders could have a problem though. When you vote on a zoning issue, you come back and you buy property in that subdivision that you voted to change the, and you build a house, you sell the house, you make money off the house. I can see that potentially could be a problem in the future, in the future.
And I would understand that too, if a builder that's sitting on this committee would abstain from a vote if it was to do with the zoning of his personal subdivision. With, you know, I, I wouldn't think that, and maybe we need to look at that, what you just brought up. If I were to go into a subdivision and buy a lot that I voted on to approve, which wasn't mine in the, in the first place, whether or not I would be subject to.
I think that's what we're trying to cover our basis to make sure that doesn't happen. So, so somebody doesn't say.
Feel like that that would be, you know, I mean, myself, I wouldn't think I would be in fault if, you know. Yes, yeah. Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Winters, I'm sorry.
I had an opportunity to sit in on this meeting and see the audit committee do a great job today. But this came about because, not because the state looked at this, it came about because there was a telephone call sent from local concerned about. So as they got that call, then they moved. Statement from the state was, if you have a primary contractor that deals with, that we give money to, then that, then they leave it at that point. It's up to that contractor to do with his money, how he chooses. So it comes a little bit technical, obviously, when it happens to be a commissioner. So it comes down that that was brought to the state by a telephone call, not because the state was looking at this. So we're really expanding what the state basically has said. Am I right as members of the audit committee? So we, we really need to be careful how far we let this go because it's just been said that it could be a way down the road that somebody's upset at a commissioner or at another employee of the district that happens to be involved. So I think it's good that we're dealing with this one issue, but it could open, open up some challenges in the road.
Absolutely. Commissioner Raper?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I, I just want to expand one thing on what Mr. Winters just commented too, is this is a quote today. He said, "He was not troubled by any of his findings. He was here because of a phone call." So I wanted to make sure that, you know, the county has done a fine job and he, he reiterated that several times and he was not troubled at all by our findings. So.
Thank you, Mr. Raper. Thank you, Mr. Ripper. I totally lost my track. Are you, are you still with Commissioner Black or Commissioner Pete? No, is it Commissioner Pete or, we're going, you, you finished? Okay. Thank you, man. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cryer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Mason, uh, and also the Road Department. I asked, uh, a couple of weeks ago for no dumping signs under the interstate on Hooper Gap Road. They have been installed. They also state there's a five hundred dollar fine. And as I suspected, it had absolutely no impact. There's a damn bunch of junk furniture laying over there right now. So, uh, I guess we go on, but at least we've got the signs. If we ever do catch them, let's, let's make sure we let them pay for it. Thank you. The second district is doing fine outside of that.
Thank you, Mr. Cryer. Commissioner Thompson.
Uh, I'd just like to say a couple of things here. First of all, uh, what Ms. Pete said there was, uh, you know, that's the reason we have a work session one day, one week, and we had a voting session next week. And first of all, it keeps you from breaking the sunshine law. And that's broke every day, I'm sure of that. Not only here, but everywhere. But, uh, if we've got work sessions that we can go over things and, uh, be more transparent with the, the people, with their people or whatever. And, uh, sometimes, uh, you know, I may not have as much education. Some, some of you, some of you, it may take me a little longer to think. So I'd rather go through a work session with something than turn around and, uh, vote on it the following week. And that's, that's very true. That's, that's the reason we skip these things. That's the reason we have a voting session and a work session, vote session, work session. So we can go through a work session. And, uh, but anyway, I, I just think that, uh, that would, uh, that would keep us, and I said us, breaking the sunshine law. And, uh, you know, that's part of the law. That's part of ethics. So that's, uh, we need to look at that too. And, uh, but other than that, uh, I'm going wide open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Commissioner Goins.
Fifth district is doing well.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every year during the second week of April, the telecommunications personnel and the public safety community are honored. This week-long event set up in nineteen eighty-one is a time to celebrate and thank those who dedicate their lives to serving the public. It is a week that should be set aside so everyone can be made aware of their hard work and dedication. I want to personally thank our local nine-one-one center for the sacrifices that they make to create a better and safer world for our community. Your commitment to your, your commitment to your profession is appreciated by all those in our community. So if you have a chance to thank our local nine-one-one center this week for, for the work that they do, I think they would all appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Slater. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I should have a T-Dot litter grant update next week, uh, for the month of March. And I'd just like to tell everybody that, just a reminder, the T-Dot litter grant is not paid by your tax dollars. It's a sixty-five thousand dollar litter grant. Um, if Ms. Autumn be so kind to put both my emails in the paper, I'd be glad to help. I help all the commissioners in their districts and I help all the constituents all over Bradley County and the city of Cleveland. So if you would, uh, send them to me, we're, we're up and running. We've got a new guy over the, um, over our workhouse, doing a fantastic job getting workers out. I'm sure him and Steve will be here. The sheriff will be here soon to, to talk about the workhouse. My crews are up and running since COVID. We're up to eight. So and I'm not working on environmental stuff. You'll find me out in your district, probably working hard to clean up Bradley County and anybody. It's always going to be a, a job to get, to get things cleaned in Bradley County. It's job security. So anytime anybody can give a hand out in your ditch in front of your house, I'd sure appreciate it. That's all, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last week we were able to dedicate the Bradley North concession stand to Maggie Sims. And I just want to say a special thank you to the Bradley County Parks and Rec and Andy Lockhart for ordering and placing that sign there. Maggie's family was very appreciative of that. So if you're at Bradley North, be sure and go and visit the Maggie Sims concession stand. Um, I also have an issue with a road, um, two, twenty-four, twenty Spring Place Road. Commissioner Mason and I have talked about this and we've both contacted T-Dot. And I've gotten with Sandra Knight about helping with this issue as well. And we're still trying to get this family a fix. They are looking to have their culvert fixed and they've been asking for this for, uh, over a year. They just messaged me a couple of weeks ago. And so if anybody can help with this and contact someone at T-Dot to get this culvert fixed for their family, they will be forever grateful. Uh, that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Commissioner Ripper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just have one thing. I, I've been having ongoing dialogue with, um, with the DA's office for a better part of a couple of years over our cemeteries, our, especially our bigger ones, uh, the upkeep of them, um, the different problems they have. Uh, and, uh, today I want to, uh, point out Fort Hill Cemetery. Uh, still having lots of problems. That's, uh, that's also where our veteran cemetery is. So it should be, uh, pristine and good shape and, and, uh, such where, uh, people can visit and be proud of it. And here are some of the things I recently saw. Overgrowth, liquor bottles, drug paraphernalia, uh, tombstones tipped over and not visible. And the roads, uh, that are in there are, uh, in pretty poor condition. So, um, uh, as a result, I've talked to, uh, Mr. Crump, our district attorney, and he said, uh, to mention this uh, in a commission meeting and the fact I was, so I can get it out to Ms. Autumn, if you'll get this out, that, uh, people that have either plots or direct descendants, and I said, what is a directed descendant? And he said, brother, sister, parent, grandparent, great-grandparent, and so on. Uh, to call in and voice their concerns, they'll need to give their, their phone number, their address, um, what concerns you, uh, you may have and so on. And, uh, and so, uh, when he gets, uh, probably ten more, then at that point he can, uh, he can take more action. So it, it's a step-by-step process and he is, uh, giving it a good effort. And, uh, let's see if we can all work together and get this cemetery in great shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ripper. Commissioner Mason.
I worked over in, uh, the cemetery just, uh, Thursday, about three hours with John Thomas and then, and several men over there. We cut out several trees and picked up a lot of litter. And we start probably this week, uh, probably the veteran cemetery and stuff. So we'll be keeping an eye on if there is any garbage.
Thank you. Is it typically in the privately owned part of Fort Hill Cemetery? Where there's the main issues?
I don't know, Mr. Chair, uh, because I don't know the definition of where the city owns and the county owns. And the other party, I, I don't want to mention their name publicly, but, um, I, I'm not sure where the, the lines are drawn. Uh, I know this, and I'm going to take it back in time just one second since Mr. Mason just, uh, made this statement. At one point he was way down in the woods and found a section of tombstones that had been down there and overgrowth, uh, had, had been such where, uh, you know, that, that's just one of many examples. So, so, uh, anyway, um, uh, but to answer your question, I don't know. I don't know the boundaries.
Okay. I, I've got a map that I'll give you that you can help you maybe. Commissioner Winters.
Uh, this seems appropriate for me to finish this dialogue with saying, we have a problem with the road too. Everybody seems to have a problem with the road. We're dealing with sixty highways. So we can tell you about road problems. Um, as a grandfather going to watch three of my grandkids in the parks and recreation, I want to shout out to that, that group of people and what they do. Uh, I was there, uh, watching, uh, baseball in the coldest spring day that you've ever been in with as much clothes as we could put on. But we went through the parking lot and the parking lot is paved and lined. It's the first time I've been back since I think a year or so ago when we talked a little bit about it, Mayor, uh, Andy and this commission, about could that be done? And it's done. I pulled, we pulled our car in that parking lot. The lines were there and really felt like we were uptown. It was really very nice. Thanks, thanks for that. Should also remind all of us, this is Holy Week. Uh, we live in the city with spirit. Uh, we believe in faith in this community. It's, it's, uh, time not only to have Holy Week, but take a look at, uh, taking what Holy Week's brought us and have a life that's filled with that, uh, resurrection. But, uh, before there was resurrection, there had to be a cross. And, uh, we should, we should, uh, live out our faith. And I try to do that every day. And I know this commission does too. And I know those seated out here do. But, uh, we have a lot of work to do to, to do that. But, uh, Holy Week is here. Uh, we've got great churches in this town. I don't think there's a town that has a number of churches we have per individuals, but also, uh, great ministers that like the gentlemen that prayed for us today. So, uh, enjoy Holy Week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Slater, then Commissioner Thompson.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there was a tire pickup again this past Saturday. Um, they were able to collect seven hundred and ninety-five tires on this past Saturday, and that brings the total to five thousand one hundred and ninety-three tires that have been disposed of, uh, that were illegally disposed of, that have now been legally disposed of.
Thank you. Commissioner Slater, Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Cryer.
Commissioner Winters, how'd you get that paid? How'd you get that payment done? We, we might want to look at some of that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Commissioner Cryer.
Thank you. I, I don't want to leave the roads alone. I for, I let it skip my mind here. Arrowhead subdivision, I'd like to, uh, put on the, uh, road committee list. You go in the subdivision, first street to the right. I don't have the photographs in front of me or the street address, but we've been there before on the county commission on this particular house. Uh, during the rain, eight inches of water accumulates on the street right in front of this house. And it's a safety issue. I believe the Tennessee Highway Patrol will tell you that if there's water covering the roadway, it's a safety issue. In this particular case, the school buses across that water. And I'll retrieve the photographs and have it for the road committee, but I'd like to put that on the road committee list if I could. Thank you.
Did you get that, Commissioner Mason? You, you gonna have a busy agenda. Right. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, agenda items. Who's doing this one? Commissioner Blake? Out of my American Rescue Plan sewer allocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you all aware of, we have, uh, we have done pretty good. We've finished up the, uh, premium pay and affordable housing. Now it's time, I guess we will start moving on to the other buckets that are described. Um, at probably a different rate. I can imagine these are going to take a lot longer because there's multiple, uh, entities involved in these. But I wanted to bring this up today because I think it's pertinent and we've all, I, I've spent a little bit of time looking over this map with all the little dots here and the septic issues and stuff like that. Um, and as you know, Mr. Chairman, you and I were forwarded an email from one of our constituents with respects to the sewer or septic issue. And I'm quite sure everybody up here has from their constituents as well. Um, so, and I'll just open this up for anybody to comment on, or Chairman will. Um, but I think we need to go ahead and, uh, set a percentage. We have the remaining buckets, the water, broadband and sewer. And we know the amounts in there. Uh, how much do we want to spend on repairing septic issues or, and stuff like that? Uh, right now, I think the only thing I think we need to do is go ahead and set it, uh, a dollar amount or a percentage of the total, which would be the same, um, on that. Um, I'm quite sure there's, uh, gonna, there's gonna be a need for a vetting process, uh, to go through. And, uh, the Landing and Build Committee can do that or, you know, people who know this better than I do, I'm sure they'll ask questions like, has any maintenance been done? Did you just buy the house? Knowing all those kinds of things like that. But what I'd like to do is ask this commission, are we willing to set aside a certain amount out of that, uh, sewer bucket for existing systems that need repair? Um, and if so, what percentage? Um, I would hope that we would at least do at least ten percent of that total that we put in this, in there. Go ahead and get that earmarked so that when, uh, um, start thinking about working with, uh, the utilities, we'll have the amount that we set aside for repair and maintenance and that. And then we'll have the amount for, I guess, sewer systems that are going to be new. So I just wanted to bring that up, uh, today so that we can get that conversation started. Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
How much money is, is in that particular bucket? It, it's not individually broken down into subject areas? No, I don't mean that. I mean, within that three and a half million, so much for water, so much for septic, so much for sewers. Each bucket is. Let's see, ten percent.
Commissioner Cryer, then Commissioner Everson.
I personally feel that we should take care of our people first with these septic systems before we start putting sewer lines outside the city limits. I don't think ten percent is enough. I, I've seen the same map that you have. I've also been in a lot of these houses and they're in desperate need of, of help. It's a safety, it's a safety in the issue and the fact that it's a health issue. So it becomes a safety issue. I, um, as far as the amount, I, I don't know what percentage of three point five. I think ten percent is three hundred thousand or something like that, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand maybe. That's not a drop in the bucket, to be honest about it. Uh, I'd like to put probably one million of that. That'd be my suggestion. I'd, I don't have any say-so at the moment on it, but I think we should start at a million dollars.
Uh, Commissioner Cryer, I was just starting, teeing up the, teeing up the idea of ten percent and where you want to go, I understand. But I just wanted to get it started.
Irritated at you. I'm just hitting the damn ball down the road.
Commissioner Everson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, would, first of all, would, uh, and I, I, and I agree that these people that would need help. And, and maybe, and I know that if some of the talk was, uh, maybe going through the HCI. Uh, and then also there's guidelines that are on that ARP money too. So I caution that we would check into that before we actually set some money aside of that ARP money. Because we may have to be paying that million dollars back if we don't. So I would let, you know, make sure that that's not going to be a problem. And also we are like, tomorrow I'm going to be going to the, to a class in Chattanooga on how to achieve some more funding for sewer, uh, which will come through the state, which we probably have a, uh, an opportunity since we have a completed master utility plan where other counties don't. We should be, we should be right there at the top of trying to achieve these funds. And we're probably looking at anywhere from fifteen to twenty million dollars of trying to achieve these funds, and we're probably looking at anywhere from fifteen to twenty million dollars that we could achieve at the state, which the, implementing the plan, it was a total estimating of eighteen million. So we do have six point five million dollars that's coming from the federal money, which third, three point five million is in water, and three million is in sewer. That's your buckets. That's how much you've got in each bucket. So that's six and a half million dollars. I spoke about that several times already. So you've got six and a half million dollars if you put the two buckets together of federal money, and then you've got an opportunity if we go and try to achieve getting this money from the state infrastructure, and there's also going to be guidelines with that too, how you spend that money. So I would say before we jump to anything, we need to make sure we do our homework. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Alford, and then Commissioner Raper, and I've got the rest of you.
Mr. Epperson, I fully agree that we do need to look at this very hard before we jump out there on this particular situation, because I'm sitting here looking at all the septic tank problems, and if I remember, I asked the engineers or whoever drew this up, did they ask the people what was the problem with their septic tank? And of course, they hadn't bothered to check with that side of it. And looking at the numbers, I'm looking at Mr. Blake put out here, the number, and Mr. Peak, you might can answer this question. What does normally replace a septic tank cost?
Well, generally, the tank isn't the issue. It's the field lines that go with the tanks. Your tanks don't fail. The only reason a tank fails or backs up is because your field line aren't working, and sometimes they can't be repaired. You can add more field line, but if your ground does not perk anymore, then there's just no way to fix it. So yeah, so more information would have to be obtained from all of those blue dots that we have. Number one, we would have to find out, how many times have you tried to repair it? Did you buy it from someone that had repaired it multiple times? And then maybe have a perk test to determine if the ground will even, you know, handle anymore field line. So that's the kind of things we do need to dive into and ask those questions, because you could just be throwing money at a problem that's not going to fix itself unless you have a sewer line in front of their house. Sometimes you just can't fix field line.
Yeah, that, that, I'm glad Ms. Peak mentioned that because I, that I'm aware of also, and, and when you start, start dealing with septic tanks, you're talking about a chunk of money. And like she said, if, if they don't have any more property that they can do a field line down, there's no solution unless they have a sewer somewhere close. So I, I fully agree with her that we definitely, and Mr. Epperson also, that we definitely need to look at this before we start talking about putting any money anywhere until we find out kind of what the total problem might be. So when you get, when you get to talking about septic tanks, and looking at the number that looks in here, I think you could spend that five point five real quick.
I think the vetting process is, is a key to this, to determine, you know, what all's been done. I mean, some people, I mean, they've done ten million things, you know. They have, and they have documentation, so, you know, those processes we have.
Commissioner Raper.
I just want to add a couple of things to what Mr. Alford and Ms. Peak just mentioned is this. We, we need to take our time. We need to find a way to communicate to the public and be sure we get, start with the worst need. And, and we need to determine what the worst need would be. Like, for example, we have some that have raw sewage surfacing. We have some that have had their tanks pumped out numbers of times. We've even had some abandoned houses. So we, we need to look at our worst need and help the Braddock Countyans that are, are, they really don't have any options anymore. So, and find a way to communicate with them, and, you know, some may just want sewer. Okay, well, that, that may be, but we need to find a way to identify those that are just wanting it, but maybe are not in drastic need like others are.
Yeah, priority process.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with Commissioner Cry. I think we have an obligation to help the citizens that do currently have failing septic systems, because not everyone wants to be on sewer. I don't think they should be made to be, be put on sewer. But also, do we look at, it's like a matching grant program where we don't fund at one hundred percent, but the homeowner has some buy-in to that project too. Is it a seventy-five, twenty-five or a fifty-fifty? And that would help the money go longer and, and help more citizens than it just be a hundred percent pass out to citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kind of like we do with HCI water funds.
Correct. They pay part and we pay part.
Thank you. Let me see, Commissioner Peak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Or, or, let me... Okay, thank you. I agree with Commissioner Slater on that aspect. I know that we have the money to help people with, but we also have money in HCI that we help water with. And I do understand that people have issues at their homes, whether it's their fault or not their fault. It's never their fault when it's ground. But sometimes you buy a property, you don't know what you're getting, or you don't have a perk test, or you build, and then twenty years down the road, your, your, your ground fails. But still, it's personal property, and usually we take responsibility for our own personal property. So I think a buy-in, like we do with the HCI, have money set aside to pay half because we won't have a third, because the HCI grant is a third, a third, a third with utility. So we won't have a utility company involved in this. So I think we should set money aside that would do half, and then the property owner would do half, and that would alleviate some of their financial issues and their struggle with these septic issues. And I do agree, this money is for our citizens, so we do need to find the best route to handle it. I just don't want to be throwing money at problems sometimes that are not going to have a resolution. So we do need to have a vetting process. We did say, I think, mentioned a couple of months ago, we would like to send it through HCI, but we can't send it through HCI. This is a whole separate thing, and they don't vet like that anyway. They just take the application and they look at it, according to Commissioner Blake, when I asked questions earlier about that. They do, they don't do that kind of vetting process. So this vetting process would have to have tons of questions answered first, and then we would set, set aside some money to maybe do half, and that's what I would like to see, is to have maybe just pay half and not a hundred percent towards it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peak, Commissioner Blake, and then Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with absolutely, the HCI committee, just a few little points on that. They basically get the application process, review that application process, and prioritize that and send a recommendation to us. We basically tell them they got X amount to grant out, and then they send it eventually to us. They just handle all the application and the prioritization and stuff like that. We, at the end, make minor tweaks to that. To the, absolutely one hundred percent agree with the vetting process. That, as you just mentioned, that is going to be key. And like I said earlier, all I'm saying is, how much do we want to, in either dollar amount or percentage of the total, do we want to earmark for this endeavor? If you'll remember, for those that were there, the comptroller came and visited us when talking about the ARP money in general, and he mentioned that existing systems, you know, should get some of our attention with respect to water and sewer. Now, the HCI committee, correct me if I'm wrong, Laurie, but the HCI committee, with all the water that we've done, and I think we can all stand tall on how much we've put towards the water over the last years, it is for new lines. I don't think we've ever gone and repaired anything with the HCI money. I think it's all been new. I could be wrong, but it's always been new, and we've done it in the sixth district, we've done it in the first district. So wherever there's needs and there's filed application, and it is part of the residents' responsibility. For a while there, we had to wait for them to all agree, and then the utility, Cleveland Utilities, in almost all cases, I believe, has put in a certain amount, and they've increased their amount. And then we obviously had the money that we set aside. It's about thirty thousand a year on that, on the HCI money for water. We could follow that same process and basically say, but we're going to have to come up with a vetting process. It basically says, how old is your system? Did you maintain, have you ever maintained it? It's something, you know, basically a checklist, or people, the experts who know this stuff, who do it, do it day in, day out, can basically make a determination as to whether or not is the best use of this money. It is limited. We don't have, you know, unlimited money to, but I do believe we should at least think about how much we're going to put in there. To the last part, with the, with the final ruling, Mayor, you may have a different opinion on this, but with the final ruling, that basically the first ten million dollars of that twenty-one, remember, not all counties got twenty-one million. Some didn't get ten, you know, I think our friends over in Polk County got a little over four or something like that. So they can pretty much spend all four however they want. But the first ten million is basically a standard deduction, if you will. We just can't use it for a pension plan, which doesn't apply to us anyway, and we can't use it to pay off our debt. Other than that, we wouldn't use it for recurring costs anyway. So I believe we would be well within the guidelines of the rulings from the feds on using this to repair existing septic tanks that are failing. But again, that's what I wanted to do. This is exactly what I wanted. We're having a good discussion. Lots of ideas are coming to the table, and that's the main thing I wanted to do today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Epperson.
In the fourth district, we have kind of a unique situation out there because we do have a utility that's trying to do water and sewer. And they are laying sewer lines and have already laid a lot of sewer line, but a lot of prob, the problem is right now, if you're not having a problem with your septic tank, it costs about forty-eight hundred dollars to hook up to that sewer. And I'm sure there's a lot of people would like to have, have, be hooked up to the sewer and not have any more septic tank problems. But anyway, you're talking about helping on things like that, paying maybe a, a customer paying half and a utility paying half or whatever. But I think that money, in our case out there, needs to go to that utility district and, and let them make a decision as to what to do. And I think they're very, very much on top of it as towards water and sewer, and they could help a lot of people out that's in need, that already having septic problems, but can't afford to hook up to the sewer. So that's something we need to look into.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Hughes, and then Commissioner Epperson.
Mr. Chairman, I've agreed with pretty much everything that's been said here, but I think honestly with the repairs, you could just about use every bit of it, just do the repairs within the county and whatever comes up in the future. However, I also know that it's, to me, listening to Commissioner Epperson, that if we approve a certain amount, we may have to pay that amount back. Which makes it sound like to me that it's a little premature to vote on this at this time. However, we also have an ad hoc committee that's over sewer and water. Why not recommend this to them and let them set up the guidelines and the, of what we need to do and the amount that needs to be used? So that would be my recommendation.
Putting all these down?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and I agree. Though, we have a lot of septic, private property owners having issues. I mean, there's quite a bit out there. The, the map doesn't even really show all the issues that we currently have going on out there. And, and I also agree with Commissioner Peak that most of these issues are only going to be resolved by maybe one day, a sewer line getting put out there in the front of their yards. And then also, I was going to mention, and we will get looking to this also to make sure, I don't think that if you're outside the city and we do decide, or if we do can get the city of Cleveland and Cleveland Utilities to agree with taking the lines out into the county, that those customers will not be obligated to pay a monthly fee, or they won't be obligated to hook to it. And we can check into that and make sure that that's, that is the case. But we have a lot of people having problems out there, and I'm, I'm forward trying to take care of all those people and, and trying to get those lines, but you know, we've got to start somewhere. And that's what we've been trying to achieve here with this plan, and it's a, it's a really good plan. And, and it's, and then the mayor, me and Mayor Davis was talking about this the other day, that, you know, this is something that's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to be where we can help these people, like, say, within a year or so. It's going to take, it's going to take up to fif, ten to fifteen years before some of these people will see relief with some help with the sewer line eventually coming in front of their homes. If you look at the plan, it, it shows four to five different places that this sewer lines are going to go through. And I'll ask tomorrow with the class that I'm going to tomorrow, whether or not that we could use this funds for, you know, private property owners to repair conventional septic systems. And I, and they have, I looked at the agenda, and there is a, a spot in there where we can ask questions, and, and that'll be one of the questions I'll ask tomorrow during the class that I'll go to tomorrow in Chattanooga from eight to twelve. But you know, the, basically, there's a lot that has to happen here. The, the, basically, the first two things would be, if, if we want to move forward, and, and I'm, I'm glad we are bringing this up in a work session, because I mean, it's going to be, we're going to have to bring it up in a lot of work sessions, because this is a really complicated plan, and a lot of discussion that has to happen. But your first two things that you would have to do with, if you're serious about starting this process, you would have to negotiate for capacity credits and surveys to determine the interest in water and sewer in any given area of any of those areas that they've pointed out. And you basically, it, it's not going to be us doing it. We would have to hire the engineering firm to do it, which that right there alone could cost anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars. And then, you know, it would, and that would be one of the first things you would do, be able to see if we can even negotiate with the city. But now, if we can't negotiate with the city, the good thing about this plan is that it's a backup. There is an option B. If we don't, and we, the first option is to work with the city of Cleveland, getting those lines where we would do that. And, but then, and again, then, basically, this is just a rough drive, what you see in these plans. You, you'd also have to hire an engineering crew to, an engineering firm to be able to go in and, and, in detail of seeing where the water and sewer lines services would need to go, and that would cost anywhere from eighteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars to hire an engineering firm to make, to make those determinations. And it would be more in detail. And then it would also, and by doing this work, it would put this county in a better position to, to, to select the actual projects for funding applications. So it's a process, and it's going to be a long process, and it's good that we're bringing this up. And, but that will be one of my questions I'll ask tomorrow. If we can use some of this infrastructure ARP money for private property, I almost think the answer, well, I'll, I'll let them answer that. I'll let y'all know, though.
Commissioner Peak, then Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to know, well, I think we should defer any recommendations until maybe Dennis can come back with what he learns at this class tomorrow. But I am interested in knowing, since we do have a utility company that has, well, we have two utility companies, one at Ocoee and one at Cleveland Utilities. Cleveland Utilities, we know right now, you can't hook up to theirs unless you're in the city. But in the county, we do have Ocoee Utility. So just say, if we have some septic tank failures, and they want to hook up to sewer, and it's close, they Ocoee Utility, could this money be used to help them hook onto that, like Commissioner Thompson was saying? That would be a great option. And from what Commissioner Blake is saying, the first ten million, we could do whatever we wanted. So I would think this would apply to that, but we could get some people's problems solved that way by hooking up to Ocoee Utility and doing a half-half grant or whatever match. So yeah, I'd like to look into that as well. Maybe I can make some phone calls to Ocoee, or if Mr. Blake has more knowledge about that ten million, if we can do those things with it, that would be a good use of that money, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. And Mr. Slater. Okay, all right. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going by what was told to us. Mayor, you may have a different, you were in the same meetings that the standard, I call it the standard deduction, seems like the word it goes. They gave a lot of latitude. Basically, do not put it in your pension plan and do not pay off anything in debt, and basically one fifty-one, all those, all those obligations the mayor was talking about.
And basically, one fifty-one, all those, all those obligations the mayor was talking about earlier on that. Other than that, you're pretty much free to go. I mean, but I look forward to Commissioner Epperson's answer. He's gonna take time out of his busy schedule to go down to Chattanooga, I believe, and get that. The other part that's been brought up, and again, this is really good discussion, is HCI's role in this. It's been mentioned before that HCI, like I said, we, it was the commission before we got on that actually earmarked thirty thousand, I believe it was, in the twenties, but at that time, it's been drawn a little bit. If we wanna go forth and save, you know, X amount, you know, this money is obviously gonna draw out one of these days, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, or something like that. I think we have to have this all appropriated, and then the projects have to be done by twenty twenty-six. But if we wanna do something like we do for water and earmark X amount per year in our budget for sewer, we probably only do one or two, maybe three or four residents a year. But that's kinda like what we do with water. We, we just do it and knock them out as much as we can over the years. I'm all for that. I've always been for that. So if that's something we wanna do, that would be the money that comes from the interest off of the principal of the Bradley Memorial Sale instead of this ARP money. So let you know, if we wanted to do that route, we certainly can. Or I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Epperson.
Oh, just real quick, I'll just add to, I'll see, I'll also ask the question about hookup fees. Could we use some of this ARP money to facilitate people that needed help for hooking, or paying for the hookup fee? Or tap-on fee, is what they call it? And I'll ask that question also and get an answer.
Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Blake.
Maybe, are you saying that you wanna run this money through HCI?
No, Commissioner Thompson, what I was saying is, it's been brought up to HCI. Like Commissioner Hughes says, I mean, you got, everybody's seen this map, we all got it. It's gonna take a while to get that. But the old saying is, how to eat elephant, one bite at a time. So I mean, we start here, here, and just over the years, we allocate, I mean, I would be willing to allocate all the money out of HCI towards water and sewer. Because I think, you know, I love playgrounds just as much as the next person. But, you know, to me, that's health, I mean, HCI is about health, welfare, and the quality of life. And if you've got sewer in the backyard, I can't imagine that's healthy. So we'll go with that. All I'm saying is that, what we're talking about is the funding of the federal money out of that sewer bucket. How much of that do we want to allocate towards fixing versus how much we want to spend on new existing lines? With the agreements on that, that's, that's what I was saying. HCI, they're, they're kinda the same, but they're two different things in a way.
If you're gonna leave HCI alone and just continue to do it like you've been a.
Right, right. I mean, HCI has its annual process. And thirty thousand has been earmarked and will be earmarked for water, and then the rest of it is granted out.
Ain't that thing turned out?
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, Commissioner Epperson.
I was just gonna add real quick, the, in this plan, this utility plan that we paid for, we're estimating, and some people thinks that the water, our water issues, and we know about everywhere we need lines now, is looking about, at about two million dollars. So we will have enough money to take care of the water issue. The water issue is not as large as an issue as the sewer is. The sewer's gonna cost a whole lot more to take care of that, those problems. But we should be able to, and then HCI will not probably not have to help those people anymore once we take care of the problem. And you know, eventually, it would, wouldn't be needed if we can take care of the problem.
Anyone else? Commissioner Blake.
Hey, Ms. Chairman, I meant to ask this, I go, we have talked about this, and I know it's been discussed numbers of times, but have we ever formally been told in writing from the city of Cleveland slash Cleveland Utilities that they will not offer sewer system service to those outside of the city that are in their area of operation? I guess, whatever, those, those lines that you see in the book here, it says Cleveland Utilities, but that they're not in, they're not in the city. They will not, in any way, shape, or form, beyond a shadow of a doubt, add as many adjectives you want, provide sewer systems to them.
I know through this process of the study, they said they would entertain discussion.
They would entertain discussion. Okay, so that answers that question. Thank you.
Yeah, well, there's hope.
And could I ask to that, Mr. Chairman, and you're exactly right. And also, you would, when you want to go to try to entertain discussion with them, you'd want to hire an engineering firm to, to be able to go in there and to negotiate for capacity. And that, like I just stated just a little bit ago, that will cost you eight to ten thousand dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Winters. One, one question, is there a timeline that you're looking at here, make a decision on this? Is it?
I assume that's me. No, I just, I kinda wanna, because we, like I said at the beginning, we finished up with premium pay, we finished up with affordable housing. We're gonna start moving into these other three, broadband. I think we'll hear something in the June, July timeframe. We've kind of got that structure already in place. I agree with Commissioner Epperson, water will not be, we've always known that sewer is gonna be the big price tag. It's, it's very expensive. I mean, we could, we could probably spend all twenty-one million on sewer. I mean, it really, but we're gonna do the best we can, get the biggest bang of the buck. But as far as timeline goes, we're just at that part in our process. The feds, and they're, they did not change this part, Mayor, as far as the deadlines, the spending money and the projects have to be done. That's still in place, even with the ten million dollar standard deduction, so to speak. So I, I imagine Chairman Moore will get with the right people. And, you know, the only question I have today is, how much do we want to allocate towards this project? And if it takes us till September one to come up with an answer, so be it.
Okay. Everybody, everybody got it? Good, good, good conversation. At this point, communication with the audience, anyone wanna speak before the commission? State your name and address, even though I know you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Popple. I live in the Quail Run Development. You guys all know me, obviously, most of you do. I do have a septic that's failing. I've spent thousands of dollars to try to get it fixed. We have one more fix that possibly could fix it. It's not guaranteed. Some of the comments that you guys have made have been great. I love that you're pursuing this. I would like to encourage you to pursue it at a faster rate than September or October. Just my opinion. A lot of people who deal with these issues have a significant issue in January through March, and then again in the fall. So this window of time right now, they don't deal with as much of the subsurface runoff because the water content has gone down. We don't have as much runoff running over these lines. Couple things to keep in mind when you're talking about a fifty-fifty relationship to this money and the homeowners. I really would like you to, encourage you to consider past costs that the homeowner has already put into a possible fix. Like I said, I've probably spent seven to ten thousand dollars on my, my existing sewer system, septic system. Can I put more into it? Absolutely. But I think that that should be, play a role in the, in the negotiations or whatever the value is that you think the homeowner should be responsible for. Secondly, I think it's also important for low-income homes that they get some sort of option to increase that percentage that the county covers. If they can't support a fifty-fifty split, that you guys work with them so that they can get a fix that solves their problem without them not being able to feed their kids. I'm lucky enough that that probably won't affect me, or I won't be in that bucket. But I know that there are a lot that do. So I just, I want you to encourage you to do this as quickly as you can, because homeowners can't, I mean, we've been dealing with this for a long time. Having dogs and kids running through live sewer is just heartbreaking. So please do your diligence to do this as quickly as you can so that we can get the help out to the, to the citizens.
Ms. Popple, how, how long, I know it's been several years. How long have you been going through the process and trying to fix this?
Eight years.
Eight years? I knew it was a long time.
We've had our lines increased three times. And the only other solution we have right now is an interceptor drain that's going to basically take all water off my property to get it out of the lines.
Ms. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Hughes, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, it was one of the reasons I requested or recommended to go to the, the ad hoc committee for sewer and water. And I believe that it would speed up the process considerably because they would be able to take all this into account and bring it to the full commission with a finished plan out. That should speed it up, instead of having to go through all fourteen of us. And you heard it tonight, everybody has their own thought about how it should work. But I think that would be the best recommendation or the easiest and quickest way to get it fixed.
And also, just do your best to try to make this as non-complicated as you can for these citizens. I, I get that there needs to be a vetting process, and I completely agree with that. But if it's eight to ten pages long, you're gonna have a lot of frustrated citizens try, and you know, that they've gotta go through eighteen hoops to figure out how to get access to this money to fix their problem. So just be conscious of that when you're going through this process, that you're not making it too complicated for the average Joe to actually go through and get the support that they need.
Thank you, Ms. Popple. Thank you. Mr. Hoffer.
Ken.
Kelly. Got a question.
Remember you from a long time ago. When you built, built your house or bought your house, how long has that been?
We bought it eight years ago.
Eight years, and you've had problems ever since?
Correct.
It wasn't disclosed when you bought the house?
We did discover it during the purchase process and negotiated that they added and fixed the lines. So they did do one fix while we were in the purchase process. We thought that was going to be the solution, and it turned out not to be.
So you are at a point now, you can't add any more fill line?
That's correct.
And it's estimated how much it's gonna cost you to fix it?
I don't know right now. I'm still working.
You afraid to guess?
Probably seven, seven to eight grand to put the interceptor drain. And that's, again, that's, they say it's an eighty-five percent chance it'll, it'll fix it, but there's still that fifteen percent chance it won't.
Is anyone else in your neighborhood got the same problem?
I think there's one other active. But we've had lots that have been fixed in the neighborhood, but I think there's still one that's active besides me.
So how much fill line have they put in, you know?
I'd have to go back and look at the permit. I don't.
But you don't have any more expansion, expansion, do you?
I don't on my current lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Epperson.
I was gonna ask you a question. Are you located out on North Lee Highway? Did you get to, well, that's one of the first areas, or that's in the plan, that one of the areas that they proposed for one of the first lines to go in.
Yeah, we're off of Jenkins Road.
Yeah.
And North Lee.
Yeah. So maybe if we implement this plan, that that sewer will be coming down.
I would love to hook up the sewer. Now, I can't tell you that everybody in my neighborhood would enjoy that, but I would love to hook up the sewer.
I'm sure, I'm sure you would. Mayor, you had something to say?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, the reason Commissioner Blake mentioned September, sewer is in next year's bucket, and there won't be money coming until September to start with on that. And it's okay if you guys do what Commissioner Blake's asking, decide how much you wanna set aside for this. It still probably can't be spent for a while. But then, what we hope to do with the sewer part is, I guess that meeting you're going to tomorrow will be telling you more about it. But as the state puts together their grant program, sort of like broadband, it'll be a matching grant. And all we will have to do is match the grant, which will make our dollars be a whole lot more, if that makes sense. You know, that three million dollars was planned on being the twenty percent match of a twenty million dollar grant or something like that. So anyway, that'll get a bigger bang than you might think, but the cost of sewer, it won't go that far. But either way, just remember that next bucket won't get here until sometime in September.
Thank you. Any other question? Thank you, Kelly. I'm sorry you have been dealing with this for a long time. Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak before the commission? Yeah, come on up. State your name, Ms. Gleason.
Fourth District. First, I'd like to just ask, we have a new sound system here. And I'm speaking on behalf of some other people, so that couldn't be here today. And the problem is, lots of times, they're not being used, and we can't hear what's being discussed. And I think that's part of letting people in this, and the citizens know that they are able to hear what's going on. So I just would like to remind you, if you would please make sure you turn your mics on when you are speaking. Also have a citizen that, I don't know if that, if you have this or not, but she has a hearing problem and would like for there to be something available, some sort of equipment available that they can use it, because she has decided not to come anymore because she can't hear anything. So I don't know if that was part of what your sound system had available or not, but anyway, just a suggestion. The other thing is, another citizen that couldn't be here today. These are just some questions. They're not rhetorical, so I, you know, if you could just let us know where this goes. What are we doing with the sludge? This was a discussion that was a couple of weeks ago, I think, with this new sewage or the septic or whatever it's called, the sewage plant, I guess. What is happening with the sludge, and how much sludge are we getting? Is it going to farmers?
I'm not sure exactly. Maybe one of them, Commissioner Epperson, Commissioner Hughes.
I was gonna, are you talking about the sludge that they stopped coming in from Atlanta to the landfill? Because that stopped.
No, because they were talking, maybe it was. They were talking about the sludge that, that we'd get from the system now.
Yeah, the only, what I'm under the understanding, they, they mentioned that they were still receiving sludge from Cleveland Utilities, but they rarely receive sludge from Cleveland Utilities because most of the time, they, they process the sludge, I guess, so really good or something, and then they're able to put it on farm, farmland. Most of that sludge from Cleveland Utilities is sold to farmers.
Well, that was the concern, because there, there is some research out now that we'd like to at least have you look into if that's the case with using sludge on the farmland. They've had to shut down some farmlands in the states because of the contamination that the sludge has in it from antibiotics and whatnot. And this affects each of us if we're taking that into our system. So she just wanted to find out if you guys had researched that, if it's an issue, if there's enough sludge that you're passing on to the farmers that maybe this needs to be looked into. And I do have some websites, but I, you know, it's really up to you.
It's, it's a, and it's approved by TDAC for any landfill to be able to accept that sludge. It's, so, I mean, I know that TDAC would probably had looked into seeing what all the, you know, parameters of what it could do to the environment or to the community. So it is something that they can legally accept. And also, what you brought up, and not to change subject, but about the intercom system and the microphone. I do know that me and Lori was having this discussion the other day, and I was supposed to bring this up. And you, I'm glad you brought that up. We need to put a mic there at that table, because when we do the live feed on with Bradley County, and anyone that speaks here at that table there, you can't hear them. So we were thinking that if we had one with a stand and a, and a mic similar to what's connected into where you're speaking at this table for about three hundred and something dollars to four hundred dollars, that we could hear what they have to say when they speak sometimes, too, when people address them.
And it's not picking up on the video either. I mean, so if people are listening by video, they're not catching all of the conversation, so.
So finance would need to look into that to see if we can afford a three to four hundred dollar microphone for that table there.
Well, and I, and I think part of that is us making sure we turn on.
Well, and I, and I think part of that is us making sure we turn on ours when we speak. That's part of the issue and I don't think that's intentional. I just think.
I don't think it's intentional, but it, it, you know, people lose the conversation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hughes and Commissioner Pete?
Ma'am, to answer your question about the sewer, you were talking about the process, the way it's processed and used on farms. There's actually sewer treatment plants that are processing it differently. What they bring to Bradley County or a landfill is the actual sludge that they can't use as for a farmland. So we have nothing to do with when it goes out to a farm or not, that's actually dealt with, with that, whichever sewer treatment plant is putting it out. Um, if that helps answer that question for you. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak before the commission? Okay, that being said, the next meeting voting session will be Monday, April eighteenth at noon. Here's the courthouse. Uh, upcoming events, remember me ribbon cutting tomorrow at three o'clock at one-twenty Kingden Drive. Uh, there will be another form of candidates tomorrow at four o'clock at the chamber. Um, and county offices will be closed this Friday and it was a very good Friday, April fifteenth. Yes.
Point of clarification, we will be voting on.
Yeah, you put, you put that on the, we had the discussion and, yeah, absolutely. Yep, okay.